All right, everybody. Welcome tonight. We'll call the meeting into order. I'm going to read the typical scenario here. The governor's declared a state of emergency to exist in California as a result of the threat of COVID-19. The governor has also issued the executive order N 3320, which directs Californians to follow public health directives, including canceling large gatherings. The executive order also allows local legislative bodies to hold meetings via conference calls while still meeting state transparency requirements. The public's health and well-being are a top priority for the city of Uba City, and you are urged to take all appropriate health, safety precautions. This meeting is utilizing Zoom application for this live broadcast. For this meeting, we will be using the questions and answers functionality of this tool in order to accommodate public comment. On your device, the questions and answers section of the app is located at the bottom of your Zoom screen. For those who would like to comment during the meeting, please enter your comment into the questions and answers portion of the app and be sure to state your item you will be commenting on. During the public comment of each item, staff will read aloud the comments provided by the public for all to hear for that specific item. Please be timely with your questions, as once the public hearing is closed or the item has been discussed by council and voted on, no more comments will be accepted for that item. So thank you on that, and may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Harris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cardoza.
Here.
Councilmember Espendola.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Here.
All right, we're all here. We're going to move on now with an invocation, words of inspiration from Mr. Javier Caballero from Grace Baptist Church of Uba City. Is Javier here? Javier was supposed to be here, and I don't see George here either. Mr. Shaw, will you bat pinch hitter if you don't mind? And I would, we will follow that out with a pledge allegiance to the flag led by None on Earth and Jackie Solman, if you don't mind.
Let's pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day that we have to do all things that honor you. Father, we just pray that you will guide us, give us wisdom beyond our years, and let us do what's in the best interest of our city. Father, we just pray blessings upon our city, blessing upon our residents, and we thank you for all that we have, in Jesus' name. Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you both for that. We're going to... Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report from closed session?
There was no reportable action taken in closed session, Mayor.
All right, and any requests to modify the agenda? Nothing? All right, we'll move on to ceremonial presentations. We have a Small Business Saturday proclamation to be presented to Sandy... There she is, right in front of me. Sandy Drown, owner of the Happy Viking, president of the Uba City Downtown Business Association. So come on down, Sandy. Here's a question for all you... Where are my glasses? I just had them. Seriously. I know.
Oh, they're right under your chair. Do not move it backwards.
Oh, there they are. All right. It's what it is. All right. All right, well, welcome, Sandy. The proclamation of Small Business Saturday, which is November 28, 2020, which is Thanksgiving weekend, the locally owned businesses contribute to our unique and vibrant community character, and small businesses are the backbone of our economy and the glue that holds communities together, creating jobs, boosting the local economy, and preserving our neighborhoods. In 2019, US shoppers who shopped at independent retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday reported spending a record high total of an estimated $19.6 billion. That's just Sutter County. Believe me? All right, we are grateful to the small, locally owned businesses of Uba City, that is an understatement, for their generous contribution to the quality of life we all enjoy. And I tell you what, that makes a big difference. All of our businesses, you know, the most conspicuous ones, of course, restaurants, bars, and the things we do where you gather socially, but everybody, all our businesses out there make a huge difference. I was driving by, I was on the phone with somebody today talking about exactly that. And, you know, I drove by, here's a bail bonds person, here's a hearing aid store. All these things, they all make a difference, and they all make Uba City special, and they all contribute in their own way. So they're all small businesses as well. So I want to acknowledge that, and thank you for everything you do. I know you work really hard. So therefore, I'm going to resolve that. I, Sean Harris, mayor of the city of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby recognize November 28, 2020, as Small Business Saturday, and urge the citizens of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Thank you very much, Sandy, representing everybody like you always do. You bet. Thank you. Let's see here. We have a presentation to our outgoing city clerk. Been a fixture over there, loving the internet applications that we deal with. And I have... Oh, here. You can just hold on to it. And I think depending upon your comfort level, if your husband, former Mayor John Buckland, would care to join you down here? No? Okay. Wanted to offer the opportunity? Well, these are your flowers, so, you know. All right, Tricia, it's kind of odd to do your own, set up your own thing, but I tell you what, because even though you knew it was coming, you knew what was going on, the sincerity and the gesture behind is still just as sincere. We appreciate everything that you've stepped up, everything you've done for our city, everything you've done to support all of us all of the time. It means so much and makes such a big difference, and it maybe, admittedly, might not be as recognized as often as it should be. But today, tonight, is your moment at our council meeting. We appreciate you, and we recognize everything you've done, and so thank you so much for everything. I'm going to read part of the proclamation we have for you here. Tricia Buckland was first appointed as Uba City Clerk on December 6, 2016. Tricia immediately accepted the responsibilities and learned as much about the city clerk's position and quickly became part of this Uba City team. And Tricia informed herself by attending the League of California City City Clerk Conferences, as well as the California City Clerk Association Conferences, to keep herself informed on the important issues which would apply to our community. And Tricia's dedication, commitment, and willingness to serve as the city clerk to the community of Uba City goes beyond measure. Thank you, Tricia, for your hard work, devotion, and enthusiasm for all that you do for the city of Uba City. And therefore, be it resolved that I, Sean Harris, mayor of the city of Uba City, on behalf of our entire city council, hereby commend Tricia Buckland for her outstanding dedication as a city clerk to the city of Uba City Council and to the Uba City community. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have a copy of the proclamation here. That's for you. We have a nice thing for your me wall at home. That's great. And we also have a little something from your city council members right here tonight. Okay? So thank you so much. What? I'm done. Were you trying to... Here's a little something for you. Okay, go.
No, I just want to say you set that bar up, and I appreciate that. And they didn't really give you the key to the city, but I have a key of success that you've had and a card from Brighton. But thank you very much, and I'll be calling you. Thanks for all you've done. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you, Jackie. Thank you. Oh, thank you. All right, presentation from Uba City Police Department. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Homeless liaison officer Troy Koski is going to give a presentation today on the current update for the different things that have been happening in the community. And his only ask is that if you guys have questions, don't save them until the end. Ask them as they go through, and that way you guys make sure you cover everything you want to do. He's got about 10 minutes, four slides, so however long you guys want to go with the questions, it's totally up to you. This is Officer Troy Koski. I think you've met him once.
All right. So I do have a lot of information as a position that you created almost a year ago, so I've tried to condense that year down to about 10 minutes. So any questions that you do have, please ask away. Get my notes here so I don't forget. The first thing that I tried to do was assess the homeless in the city and where they were living, tried to find out who the homeless were and what made them homeless. Then I tried to identify the problematic areas where they liked to hang out. Areas that they liked to frequent, had cover, and food, and panhandling as their primary way to make money. Also had folks that were living in RVs and vehicles, and they would park those vehicles in the boat ramp, Second Street, large parking lots, and also in cul-de-sacs that were out of the way trying to hide. They moved around quite a bit when their vehicles did run. A lot of those areas needed consistent and frequent patrol and work. I found out that the homeless liked to stay in certain geographical areas, much like they had a neighborhood, because most of them were walking, and they would push carts or with all their gear, they'd try to stay in main, kind of like neighborhoods that they'd stay. Some of those areas were the boat ramp, Second Street area, Queens and Live Oak, the Sinclair gas station, the east end of Linway, the Walmart, Home Depot, Lowe's, and Tharp area. And then there's a group that liked to stay in Winco, Cinemark, the Quick Stop on Bridge, and then the Colusa Corridor. Again, all of those areas provided them the ability to either have shelter, food, or panhandling to make money. They call it flying a sign. You see those folks that are out there. I saw that many of these areas were both private and public that they were staying on, so I read the Boise versus Martin decision to make sure that I wasn't violating that case law or any of their civil rights. I found the many of the codes, the penal code and the municipal code, that I could use to enforce for camping and trespassing on private property. Then I looked at outreach versus enforcement. What was the best tool for what needed to happen? I tried to find out what the needs were for the homeless, and if I could provide outreach to fill that need to help move them from homelessness. Recently, the Hart team allowed one of their members to go out. We started going out on a regular weekly basis. I'd go out with the Hart team, someone from Hands of Hope, and also the street nurse to go out and try and provide outreach for what their needs were, because we found that they weren't really wanting to go in to get the services. These are the chronic homeless that we have, that a lot of us see. Outreach and assistance was provided on every contact that I made. I always prefaced, "How can I help you? What can I do to get you from living on the streets?" Through that outreach with those different entities, several people were actually housed in shelters and then no longer living on the streets. We do have several areas now in the Uba Sutter area for them to stay. The most recent is the Safe Overnight Tent Camping Area that's on Second Street. They're allowed to go there from 6:00 to 8:00 in the morning. They've leveled that area that's just south of the airport by the Public Shooting Range or the Rod and Gun Club down there. They have pallets out there with plywood on them. They have bathrooms and hand washing stations, trying to get folks to use it. They're a little bit resistant to it for some reason. We have the Better Way on Live Oak Boulevard, Project Home Key, the hotel that was recently purchased, that's in the process of becoming available. And we have Project Room Key, which was for folks that are 65 and older or have severe medical conditions. The Life Building Center in Marysville was recently updated, and they're allowed to stay there as well. I think they have 25 different rooms, and they're able to stay there at night. The newest one will be the New Haven Court Project, which is on Percy and Garden, should be hopefully open April, is what they're talking about. Then I started meeting with the property owners, business owners, and employees, trying to reduce the homelessness on their properties. We talked about cleaning up the debris that's left by the homeless, basically so that another person would not come along and either make a mess of that or use that to build their own camp. Different lighting options, and the big one was trimming the shrubs and the trees so they could not hide. It's amazing how they can hide. We've got some before and after photos here in a minute. And then fencing. For the folks that didn't want to take the outreach, then I looked at the enforcement end of it, met with the misdemeanor district attorney team to discuss the different codes that we could use, again, that wouldn't violate the Boise decision, and how will be best for us to document those cases when they went to court. Part of that was to contact the business owners and have them sign trespass authorization forms that we could have on file, so that if there was an issue at night when they weren't available, we could handle it. I took all that information, provided it to our officers in briefing trainings, so that they were also aware and could be part of that, so it wasn't just myself that was out there for the enforcement part of it. And then for networking, there are so many different public agencies and private nonprofit law enforcement that are collaborating, trying to change homelessness. I attend many of those different meetings to represent the city, to try to reduce the homelessness in the Sutter Uba area. One of the things that I found was trying to get more direct communication with the citizens. So I met with George Barlow and the YC 311 app. He added the illegal camping and vagrancy to the service request, and those come directly to me for a much quicker response. Working closely with other city departments has been key in cleaning up the amount of debris that's left. Eric Ball at Code Enforcement and the entire Code Enforcement or Public Works team have been tremendous impact in cleaning up the things that's left by the homeless. Even on the hottest days in summer, they're always there with their tractors and dump trucks. Many of the areas, like the boat ramp, were reoccurring because people would move, come and go, and that's where I tried to get the public to be my eyes and ears, because it was tough to be able to make my loop and try to get on those things before they got out of hand. I have some other items that I'm researching right now that might assist in helping reduce the calls for service and involvement of homeless and trespassing. Those are some things that I'm working on that hopefully we can get to soon. And then I have some before and after photos. Kind of, this is the area at the dead end of Market Street. This was a private property. A lot of these folks were living on this property for probably two years. We worked at trying to get him out of there. He's actually now leasing this property. He's able to use this property again because we were able to move these folks out of here. This is that same property behind A&amp;A Concrete. This was the house that was just across the street from Winco. Eric Ball was key in working with the owner to get this removed. This was actually the south side of the on-ramp to the 10th Street Bridge going into Marysville. This was approximately 50-foot camp that popped up. And then we got in and cleaned that out of there. This is the dead end of Linway, another part, another area where they seemed to frequent because of the access to the levee. And this is A Street at Plumas. Public Works has, again, cleaned this up on multiple occasions. They finally, we just took the trees out. They don't stay there anymore, or the bushes. We had several encampments along the levee behind the district attorney's office on Second Street, and this is probably the first time that we really went out and did outreach, tried to move these folks into shelters. They'd been living down here for a while. And it's still vacant. They haven't, they're not moving back in. Again, that's part of that consistent checking and patrol. Again, this is part of the removing bushes. When you looked at this from the front side, you couldn't see the camp in there, and the owner decided just to take the bushes out, and they don't camp there any longer. This is behind Sierra Central on Harder Parkway. So again, kind of reduced that year into 10 or 15 minutes. Do you have any questions or any suggestions?
Through the mayor. First, thanks, chief. We had made this request to get an update from on the homeless, and Officer Koski, just proud of the work that you had to do and have done and will continue to do. I don't think, part of the reason in the request was just to shine a light on the good stuff that you guys are doing, and that includes the whole PD. I know that everyone has a piece of this, but you're the tip of the spear, if you will, and the stuff that you've been able to accomplish. I think you're in an unenviable position in regards to the fact that no matter what you do, it's never going to be probably enough for some people, but I want you to know that I know that you're working hard, and again, law enforcement, our local law enforcement, Uba City PD is doing the same. I guess the question I have is, when we're, you know, we try to relocate those folks who have found themselves in a situation where they aren't with a home. And of course, now we're into tough weathers. What, if you had to give us one or two things that we as a council could support, continue to support your efforts, are there two priorities? Are there two things that perhaps come out that you have seen?
I would, I see that many of our homeless suffer from malnourishment. Many people would say that they're, if you want to say lazy, but they don't get real consistent food on a regular basis. They have to find their food, and they're addiction to either alcohol or drugs. And then mental health comes into that, and it depends on which comes first. They usually typically have both. The drugs could bring on the mental health issues, or the mental health makes them use the drugs. They don't like the way the mental health medication makes them feel, so they'll use drugs.
I know in previous conversations that drug addiction or alcohol issues are a big contributor. Are there enough local resources to help those folks, or is that an area that continues to need some support?
There are. Actually, just last week, Dr. Mark Sluszremeyer, I believe is his name, has a program that he's got a goal to get 30 people into. They have money or a grant for residential treatment. The tough part is getting these people to agree that they have an addiction problem and to get them to go in. I have many that say yes, they want to go. I've had few that have actually followed through with the program, either it be the methadone program that they can get. And then South Hospital also has a program for the Suboxone that's a little different than the methadone. They say that's a little different program that may help better. And then this program that is now available through, apparently it's through the end of the year. And I've got, I talked to a couple of people today that say yes, they're interested, and so I'm going to put them in contact to hopefully start that process.
Again, thanks for the presentation. I hope the public that is concerned about whether there are any efforts going on in the city of Uba City take the time to perhaps listen to this and see that there are efforts being undertaken, and thank you individually for your effort. Thank you, chief, and the other members of the audience in law enforcement and Uba City PD, because I know it's a daily thing. I know it's a daily thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good day, Mayor. Troy, thank you for everything you've done. I'm going to follow the vice mayor's comments in one year. You've done a lot of work, and thank you. I want to thank you very much for that. And the only question I have for you is, is I'm pretty much, you know, involved with the homeless issues also, trying to help. Homeless Planning Commission, Committee, Homeless Planning Committee, where's that at that you had on there? I've never heard of that.
It's probably one of the things that I've read. I've read so many different things.
Okay, all right.
I've read the five-year strategic plan that was developed.
That's probably from Sutter County's then, when they did theirs four years ago then. Okay, I just wanted to say.
All those different articles that I've read, trying to see where the direction, that's what I want to do, is want to make sure that I went in the direction that you guys had already set forward.
Okay, thank you. And also, Police Department, all the employees, chief, thank you all for what you do. Makes our town safe and places people want to come and live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Troy, I am just amazed, seriously. When you, before taking office, I don't know, you had, you've always had this desire to help people. And chief, I think he pretty much volunteered, or how, or was it voluntold? Or, no, it was a volunteer, right? Tested, right? And what an amazing amount of work that you, along with your peers, Public Works, Code Enforcement, the feedback that I receive on the other end, always very positive about your work. It's, you know, everyone knows you, which is really, really valuable. Your method of interacting with people, the homeless know you in a positive way, I mean, and when you're having to be difficult or, you know, challenging to them, they sense the respect you have from them and vice versa. Out of all the, the new program, the Hart program, it's not completely like all there yet together, right, with all the teams and...
COVID really threw a loop.
Yeah.
For that, and that's what delayed the response for them being able to come out. They didn't want them to come out, and it's been a couple of months since they've allowed their outreach person to come along.
So bringing up COVID within the homeless population, how many, do you know if it's been as prevalent?
It's very few. They, the Health Department has trailers that are at the fairgrounds. I think they have 20 now, and to my knowledge, there's only been three or four that have actually had to quarantine in the trailers. And that's including the, I think a couple of them came from Better Way. So they've done a great job. I went up there and provided some training for the participants on trying to be COVID safe. Emelda was great trying to get that going, so it hasn't been as bad as I think they thought it was going to be for the homeless.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of concern, I think, early on, right? And surprisingly, knock on wood, you know... And surprisingly, knock on wood, you know, things are going pretty well in that vulnerable community. How is the, how's the response by our local business owners and private community? Because I know, I know, we got some testimonial here, but I also, sometimes I get constituents email me pictures and text me things and, you know, what is the city doing?
It's been great. In fact, Sandy invited me to come do a presentation. We did a presentation for the Downtown Business Association. And again, the main thing is trying to get everyone to be my eyes and ears and let me know right away when something's happening, so then I can take action instead of waiting for, to be a larger problem that makes it more difficult to try and tackle.
The areas that I've heard from our community is the area where that Dollar Store, McDonald's, next to the?
Perfect storm.
Okay, so I didn't see any pictures and I was hoping to see a picture.
I had so many pictures.
Where are you at with that one? Because I haven't been?
That is, there's, that has been cleaned up multiple times. And the problem with that is, again, it's the perfect storm. People actually drive by and they will leave mattresses, food. I was by there yesterday and somebody left 10 boxes of teas and food for the homeless. So that's the other part of the problem, is that that's why they hang out there, is because there's McDonald's right there and the Dollar Store. And people do feel bad. They, and they'll come out and they just give them those things. I've actually seen people drop off McDonald's and they just throw it to the side because they said, we've already got too many meals. We're full, we can't eat it. And there was a new manager that has taken over recently in the last couple of weeks, and he's been very proactive working with me to try and keep that area cleaned up. So when I moved them out, then I requested the, the business owner go in and clean that area out, again, so it doesn't look like it's, doesn't make it as inviting for them to come back.
And so that, so then on the Winco side, because that's the other part, I get calls from Winco and then Second Street, the housing there. But with the Winco area is, because that's cleaned up, so there's less transients or, you know?
There are. The Winco area with that house being gone, there are some that still sleep around the backside, some that do sleep out in that field. Again, I try to keep that down. There's been a couple of fires out there that have been started. And the Fire Department had to go out and put out. But it has reduced dramatically since that house was taken down.
Well, I'm, I'm really thoroughly impressed. And any way that we can help you, you know, as a city council, I don't know if we need more than one Troy, I don't know, Chief, you know, to help him out. Because when you're off, it's then try to catch up, right? Or how does that work for you?
Well, actually, I, I work with the, the Sergeants' Run Graveyard and talk to them. So it's not just me, again, it's, it's the whole department. And that's why I hold the briefing trainings. I've got them all a cheat sheet, so they know the, the kind of the main ordinances that are available that they can use at their disposal, so it can be easy for them to either, to write citations, or so they know they have the right to move people along.
Well, the example of the work that you're doing along with the leadership of our Fire Chief, this is a really good model of example of how to work within homeless community and also utilize the networking. So you're doing a multi-tier system of service, and that's pretty impressive. And I, I thank you so much. I mean, seriously, I want to have tears in my eyes at this moment because I'm so proud of the work that you're doing for our community. So thank you so much. And thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate that work.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Through the mayor. Officer Kosky, thank you for the work that you've been doing. I've had the pleasure, or the unfortunate pleasure of having to call you because of our homeless issues around here. But I just want to share with the Chief and the executive team of PD who's here tonight that you are doing a fabulous job. There's proof in the job that you're doing because it's creating another problem. And so that's, I'm going to have a question for Chief Landon here in just a second to see what we can do on that. But you've been great for outreach. We just recently had a problem, and I was quite surprised when you came to my office for follow-up yesterday and, because of an issue that we had over at our office with a homeless person. And I just want to say thank you. I know you're one person, and you're having tremendous impact. And so many, many thanks there. But Chief, can I ask a question of you? Because we're making inroads, and Officer Kosky's already mentioned a couple of things there that we have to educate our public, because as good-hearted as our public is, they're enabling the homeless when they keep giving them food outside of the system that we should be trying to get them affiliated with to solve the homeless problem. The reason I know that we've created an additional problem is because we've got them out of the river bottoms, we got them out from behind Dollar, the Dollar Store and all these other places. And we're starting to see them all over town in places that you wouldn't see them. In the last six months, I've had more issues in my business complex that we've had to call PD. Some of the, the recent one was pretty scary, as far as my staff was concerned, what happened. What do we need to do for PD? Because I see the strain, and I'm not saying you guys didn't, it was great. Officer showed up, follow-up, follow-up with Officer Kosky. But I see this secondary problem coming, because they were isolated in these areas, but now we're moving them into other areas. And it's, it's a real problem for our business owners. I mean, DBA has talked about it, they've had problems down on Plumas Street. I'm clear on the west end of town, the particular transit that was involved in ours, in three days, was everywhere from around Live Oak Boulevard to South End near Lincoln to my complex out on the other side of Stabler. And it's, it's a real problem. How are we going to, you know, combat this? Because I know you guys are already stressed trying to deal with everything else. Is there something that we can define as a need that would help us combat this? Because I just see this becoming a bigger problem. The more work that Officer Kosky does, working with all the auxiliary offices to clean things up, it's impacting us. It's impacting my business, it's impacting other businesses. What are we going to do? And do you have any ideas on what we can do as a council to help you, help us, help everybody else?
Yeah, absolutely. Well, first of all, it's not a Uba City problem, so we have to understand that. That is not a California problem, it's a nationwide problem. So we are so much further ahead, having just been up to Eugene, having just been up to Portland in the past couple of weeks, and seeing where they've intruded upon and where Boise Martin decision has totally impacted them, where they're no longer citing people, they're not, no longer able to do that. So when you're asking about what can you do to help, first of all, I don't know the numbers exact, I'm just going to shoot a figure out here. And I think it's, we probably do about 35,000 to 40,000 calls for service a year for all the officers. And probably about 10% of that, if not a greater number, are all transient-related issues. So patrols going out there on the calls, a lot of them are not crimes. And a lot of the homeless issues are not crimes, they're more nuisance-type things that we can't impact. I think, first of all, number one is, you do have just one Troy.
Right.
If we had two Troyes, then you'd have double bang for your buck. So this past year, and seeing the amount of, that's one of the things we really wanted to do, is a beta site, is to show how much he's working, how much he's impacting these different things, and the bang for the buck that we are actually getting for him. When he goes out on a location, he's by himself. We can't pull a patrol officer, because most of the time they're responding to the other 40,000 or 35,000 calls for service. So you can't just pull somebody and say, hey Troy, go deal with this right now. He's going out in these situations a lot of times by himself, and a lot of times he's waiting for another officer, depending on the impact. So that's the biggest thing, is I think if we're looking to really combat, and we're addressing, this is one of the major issues in Uba City, then we have to put more resources towards that. Whether it's overtime, or whether it's getting another officer into that position, that for me, it would be huge. Yeah, he is only working here part-hours, he's not here after night. And yeah, things do, you know, patrol at nighttime, they're answering nighttime patrol calls, they're not out there actively doing the same things you do in the daytime. If we had that, that'd be wonderful. So that's huge for us. And then I know that you guys have been talking about different ordinances and stuff, and that's what we're exploring right now. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. We know there's Rosevilles, Rocklands, and other agencies that have had great success, West Sacramento, Vacaville, that have done this and done different programs, whether it's a shopping cart-type thing. But we just can't put an ordinance out there and not have the ability to enforce it, because it makes it look like we're just throwing all these laws out there and not the ability. So it's a combination of two. It's getting the enforcement, the ordinance, getting the business people to work with us, the neighborhood people, the residents not to be afraid to call us if they're going through your trash at night and stuff like that. Yeah, maybe we won't get somebody out there right away, maybe something's going on that's more important or more, needs an officer out there at that particular time. But documentation for us is huge as well. So we know the same areas we're getting hit every Tuesday, you know, when garbage night is on the north side of town, or Wednesday, whenever it happens to be. So residents, businesses, stop trying to be the nice guy all the time and giving them the little jobs for an hour or so, because they're going to keep coming back for that job an hour a week and for that sandwich or whatever it is. Another one of these guys, I don't think you're going to get the same quality, but I think if we got something that would work up. I hope that addressed your?
That helped. It's, you know, we definitely got something special that's going on here, and I really do appreciate everything that PD does. It's, I just also realize how stressed the resources are. And so looking to where we go to that next level, and it sounds like you're saying it's a combination, but one of the keys is an additional resource officer that can be dedicated, because every officer that I've had dealings with has been top-notch, follow-through, dealing with things. I can just talk from my personal experience, and I'm not retail, I'm a professional office. And if I'm dealing with it as a professional office, then I can only imagine what restaurants and retail deal with, because it was a substance abuse-type individual that was just recently in my office. And so I think the other two takeaways would be very simple, to make sure the public is aware, like I said earlier, don't be over compassionate. We have resources, and they need to be directed to the resources, because we're enabling them. And a second, and I think it came in pretty valuable with our PD and Officer Kosky, was surveillance cameras at your business, help. Because we was able to pull right up, pull the picture up, and I had it in the officer's hands, and sight of two minutes of them arriving at my office, and they got it to Officer Kosky. And he was a known person. So it started filling in all the blanks there. So I think we've got some education with our businesses, and we need to partner with all of our districts, the DBA, and just everything, so people know what we need to do to help to work together to make your job a little easier and to make your whole department chief even more of a success than it already is. So, so thank you.
Thanks. And I do want to also mention that, you know, we didn't have the, I think the Sheriff's Department has done an outstanding job with Sheriff Barnes and their local person, because now we're able to work, you know, in partnership. They're, with those new housing that's becoming available, we are able to make an impact on the Boise decision, where we have to have so many homeless homes or beds available for them. So I think a shout-out goes to them as well. And I think you can see that if you go down Second Street by Whittaker Hall in that area.
Absolutely, absolutely. We're all working together, so absolutely, thank you.
That's definitely the name of the game, is that, Troy? I have one more thing. I know you want to get out of here, I've been, I've been there before, so. I'd just be interested in your impression. I mean, you took the job on about a year ago. Is there anything that you've learned or experienced in that year that you thought, that you weren't aware of, that kind of any aha moments regarding homelessness and our approach to it? From what is your, what is your personal opinion on, on that?
I think the biggest takeaway for me is that I'm offering these things and why they can't accept them. What is going on that they can't accept that outreach to help them get off the streets? I don't know if it's the fact that they've been there for so long, and they don't think it's going to work, I'm not sure, but it's them just not taking it. Because I, like I said, at every contact that I do, I make sure that I provide that outreach as part of the Boise decision. I don't want it to just be on enforcement. They just don't take it.
And then they flat-out say no?
Yeah.
All right.
They, yeah, I don't have an addiction problem.
And so then we follow up that with, you know, I feel for the businesses as well, but also the folks who live. You know, Shanghai Ban comes to mind immediately, I mean, that's their folks' home, the whole story, right? They work hard, they try to pay their mortgage, and then they have somebody victimizing them every night when they're just minding their own business. That has got to be maddening. And it definitely, in their world, we're not doing anything, right? Because they, we are, but I can understand what their point is, you know? And have you had, I mean, it could be the mental illness, or maybe the priority, I suppose, would be the mental illness and then probably the other addictions. But have you had a conversation with them, say, hey, you know, you're, yeah, you're homeless, but do you really have to use the city as a toilet when you have options? Do you really have to use this, our sidewalks as a, as a trash can? Because, you know, if we had some public, I'm not going to say what the word is, but support, I mean, to me, it's, there's this wall there, and they're creating their own bad weather by not respecting our businesses and our residents.
That is actually the biggest thing that I, I do, is I try to educate them that that, the way that they disrespect other people's property like that is the biggest thing that people lose their empathy for them. I carry all this stuff, but now the main thing that I use are trash bags. I actually, I hand out trash bags, and I will make them clean up their mess before they leave. And again, I try to talk to them about, you need to keep yourself clean. I understand that when they find things, they may not know how they're going to use that. They know that they could probably use it or trade it. That's why they have so many things. But then when they're done with it, they just leave it. And that's what I'm trying to educate them on, you can't just leave this here, you got to, there's dumpsters all over the city. And, you know, the urination and defecation is, is something that is obviously a normal function in a lot of businesses, especially with COVID now, they don't want them in their store. So they, I think they've lost maybe some of their dignity or their respect, and they just do whatever they got to do.
All right, well, I won't belabor the point, it sounds like you're experiencing exactly what my question and concern was. It'd be nice to get them to do their part, so we can actually come together and help, you know, but I can understand why people don't want to, they just get frustrated. So thank you very much for all you do, Chief, for the rest of the PD, we really appreciate it. We see the difference you make every day, and we'll get there. But thank you so much for everything, Troy.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
Through the mayor, I just wanted to add that this month is Homeless Prevention Month. And in that, so it's very timely that we have this presentation today. And also, within, the Salvation Army is hosting, they host an annual award, they call the Spirit Award. And the Homeless Consortium is receiving that award this year. And so when we get to, I would request that the council recognize the work and a certificate, perhaps, to the consortium, and including Troy, because he's part of that, our PD, including them in that acknowledgement, and some sort of certificate of acknowledging the work from the council. Because it is, in with, it doesn't seem monumental, but Troy has worked along with other officers in the city and with Homeless Consortium very closely. And the HART team, if the HART team was full-function, I think you would have a lot more, perhaps, of support to help you with that defiance by these individuals. But I'm asking for a certificate of recognition for the work that's been done by the Homeless Consortium and including our PD with them.
Thank you for that.
Okay, thank you.
Item number four, discussion regarding COVID-19.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are having a little bit of technical difficulties, and that the computer's not cooperating right now.
It's okay.
But I can proceed on without the presentation. So as of yesterday, the governor held a press conference, in which based upon the dramatic rise in cases throughout California, he moved a bunch of counties back into the purple tier, including Sutter County. And that becomes effective basically tonight. And so what that means is that the purple tier is the most restrictive, and so our businesses will have to comply with the restrictions within that. So again, that means, you know, no indoor church services, outdoor dining, and even with retail, that has to be scaled back to 25% of capacity. One of the things to note is that, oh, Sierra's got it up, is that if you look at the case count specific to Uba City. Bring it up, okay. Thank you very much, Brian. So here's, here's now what California looks like in terms of all of the counties within the purple tier. Uba County's numbers, if you look, 14.6 new cases per 100,000, and then 8... Uh, Yuba County's numbers, if you look, um, 14.6 new cases per 100,000 and then 8.2% positivity rate. Sutter County is 21.8 new cases per 100,000 with a 10.9% positivity rate. And then I wanted to include this, if you look at the new cases, so new cases reported per day, um, even in the summer when they first did the shutdown, this was the number of new cases that we had. And then this is where we're tracking for November. And today, um, I believe we're about 82 cases for Sutter County. And what's important about this is if you look at the number of active cases per day, you can see that it tends to build over time. If you look at the number of residents in the hospital, 11 currently in the hospital from Sutter County, two in the ICU, and you can again start to see those numbers peak up. And what's, what's important about this is that the hospitalizations don't necessarily occur with when people are diagnosed with COVID, it tends to lag a little bit. So we would expect to see these numbers also start to increase as we have an increase in COVID cases. The source of infection, um, you can see a large number based upon contact with known cases. In the contact with known cases, people that you live with, uh, friends and family in the community, coworkers, and then if you look down here, schools and daycare and from healthcare. And so Dr. Liu had a phone call yesterday in which she noted that a large majority of the increase in cases for both Sutter and Yuba County is related to those social gatherings, whether it was Halloween and people having parties or just going over to a friend's house for dinner. And the concern is with the upcoming holidays with Thanksgiving and Christmas, um, the importance of trying to limit that interaction outside of what they call your bubble. And then another thing that's important is that yesterday, Dr. Liu and the county superintendents of schools sent a letter to the, um, local superintendents of schools, so for instance, Yuba City School District, and that, um, they have to pause where they're currently at in regards to their elementary in-person schooling. So what that means is that you had already started grades K through two back in person, but your plan was to move forward with bringing third and fourth back, you have to pause that, you can't do that right now. And then for grades seven through 12, for schools, there, there actually were some schools that were, um, having in-person classrooms for seven through 12, they have to go back to distance learning and this must be accomplished no later than next Monday, November 23rd. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions in regard to city operations, really no change at this point in time, um, to city operations and, uh, any questions?
For yourself explanatory, Diana, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information and the update. All right, so move on to item number five, appearance of interested citizens. Due to COVID-19, residents are encouraged to attend the city council meeting via web conference or submit comments by email consistent with public health guidelines for social distancing. Limited seating is available in the council chamber and the Sutter Room. If an attendee does not have a facial covering, one will be provided. Comments may be made either at the council chamber podium or from the Sutter Room. Please participate via web conference or email if you are ill or have been exposed to COVID-19. And I know we have at least one speaking card from Sandy Drown. Come on up. If anybody else would like to say anything, please queue up. Anything online, ma'am? Nothing online? Okay, Sandy, you're it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your time. Um, so on behalf of the Downtown Business Association, uh, we wanted to come here today and reward, or recognize, um, it was going to be a certain person, but we thought within this department, there's amazing people there. So in recognition, and I just wanted to point out, Sergeant Slade, um, thank you for all of your hard work.
Sergeant Slade?
Oh, well, you know which one because you're pointing. We've been good friends for a while. Um, and then Officer Kloski, um, as well has been really a great friend to ours. Brian Baker's helped us a lot with some of the stuff that we've had for downtown. But just the whole group, Katie and everybody, but on behalf of the DBA, we wanted to recognize the outstanding dedication to public safety honoring the Yuba City Police Department with great appreciation of your commitment to the safety of our community. Thank you for going above and beyond serving the citizens of downtown Yuba City 2020. And Chief Landon, if you would accept that on your department's behalf.
Good evening. Name is Thomas Burns. So after I watched that, uh, with the Ministry of Truth and talking about the COVID and, and the governor and his tyranny program and many other governors around the state, so it looks like, uh, another effort to continue to destroy small business, which I think is unbelievable. So, anyway, during my reading the other day, I came across this Psalm and it reminded me of this situation, so I'm going to read it. It is Psalm, Chapter 2, it says, "Why do the heathen rage and the people imagine a vain thing? The kings of the earth set themselves and the rulers take counsel together against the Lord and against his anointed, saying, 'Let us break their bands asunder and cast their weight, their cords from us.' He that sitteth in the heavens shall laugh; the Lord shall have them in derision; then shall he speak unto them in his wrath and vex them in his sore displeasure. Yet have I set my king upon my holy hill of Zion; I will declare the decree the Lord hath set unto me: Thou art my son; this day have I begotten thee. Ask of me, and I will give thee the heathen for thine inheritance and the othermost parts of the earth for thy possession. Thou shalt break them with a rod of iron; thou shalt dash them in pieces like a potter's vessel. Be wise now therefore, O ye kings; be instructed, ye judges of the earth. Serve the Lord with fear and rejoice with trembling; kiss the Son, lest he be angry and ye perish from the way, when his wrath is kindled but a little. Blessed are they that put their trust in him." So Governor Newsom, you're not a king and you don't have the authority to run people out of business. That's my word.
All right, thank you, Tom. Do we have any more? Online?
No additional comments.
Nothing, okay. Don't see anybody standing up. Move on to consent calendar. All matters listed on our consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the council staff or public request specific items to be discussed or removed from the calendar. Would anyone from the public like to speak on these items? All right, seeing none.
To the mayor.
Sir.
Like to make a recommendation of the consent calendar, items six through 11.
Second. All right, I have a first and a second to approve the consent calendar as listed. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Nothing. Passes, thank you very much. Business items, number 12, an annual report from the downtown Yuba City Business Improvement District and a proposed levy of annual assessment for 2021. Welcome, Brad.
Good evening, council members. Brad McIntyre, your Community Services Director. The item before you this evening is the Downtown Business Association is requesting council consider two resolutions. One is to accept and approve the 2021 annual report and the DBA, by the DBA Improvement District, that's the first one. Second one is to adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect the 2021 annual assessments and additionally set a public hearing for December 5th, 2020. This report, uh, is given every year by our DBA. Uh, this year's DBA president, already been introduced a couple of times this evening, Sandy Drown, will come and give the presentation. After the presentation's over, I'll come back before you to, uh, consider the, uh, resolutions. Thank you.
Sorry you guys have to deal with me three times today. Thank you for your time, Mayor Harris, Vice Mayor Boomgarden, and council. So we're here, I'm Sandy Drown with the Downtown Business Association, President this year, and we're here to present our annual report. So on this slide, you will notice that, uh, this is how we were zoned, this is called the Downtown Business Improvement District. And you'll see Zone A and Zone B. And then you'll see a little bit, the yellow actually, um, identifies residential use as well within that, within that zoning. The next slide you'll see is the district assessment formula. That was set up back in, uh, January 1st of 1999. I don't know if you have any questions on those, but those are the assessments. That's what we collect. Next slide will be, is our directors and committees for the Yuba City Downtown Business Association. And so you will see, um, we've got some new members coming on board in January. We have Brian Hopper, um, who owns Hopper Party Properties, Kimberly Penn, who, um, owns a babies-to-teen consignment. We have Scott Sargent, um, from Sutter Buttes Brewery, took us a little while to get him on the board, but we finally did. Um, he is also a property owner as well. Um, we have Natalie Silversen, which owns a photography company, and then we have Tucker Walton, who, um, works at Suncrest Bank, which is exciting to get some frank presence back on our board. So that is our board. Um, we have three committees, uh, when, I think I first started, we had, five? Okay, five. So we've kind of narrowed it down just to stay focused, um, with such a small boards, but that's there. And then we have our mission for our organization, which is the mission of the Yuba City Downtown Business Association, is to preserve, promote, encourage, aspire businesses, and provide a safe, clean center for culture, community, life for residents and visitors alike. Here's some of the activities that we've done, um, this last year. You'll notice, um, the summer stroll, of course, was canceled, but we had the Trick or Treat Street. Uh, we tried to create a summer marketplace, which we did for three months, which incurred people to, people to come down. And then you'll notice recently, which, sorry, recently, which is the holiday tree lighting. If anybody has not been down Plumas Street yet, I would highly encourage you to. Um, that was, that's our second year going into that, and so through our, all of our committees, we've been able to budget for that. And I don't know if there's any questions for that? If not, I'll keep going. Uh, this was our Christmas stroll from last year, and the reason why we kind of throw this in there is because last year I spoke in November, um, so this is, uh, following to that, the tree lighting we had, our mayor's welcome, which Sean, uh, did that and the lights went off successfully. And we had our Polar Express train. Of course, I had already mentioned that, uh, the summer stroll, um, was canceled this year. And then we did have our Trick or Treat Street this year, um, you'll see our celebrity crosswalk. It's always fun when it's an election year because you get a lot more people holding signs for us. We had a family that, um, mother and child dressed up, and we saw a lot more of that this year, um, of parents getting dressed up as well. And then we had this cute little, uh, DUI costume, um, that the mother did, so we threw that in a flag because we thought it was super cute. Here's kind of a matrix or like the pie chart of what our members look like. So you can see we're really heavy on retail. Um, these are the dues that we collect. The average dues, um, for each member is 4.85, depending if you have more employees than it would be a little bit more. But we were able to get four new, or I'm sorry, three new members this year, even during the, the difficult time, which is exciting. We had one business that was, uh, completely brand new, uh, Center Street Salon. E&amp;H has been around, um, if you've noticed, around town, but they wanted to come to downtown, so we were excited about that. And then we have the other, um, at the bottom, Perez, and that's going to be an ice cream Here's our associated members. An associated member are businesses that are not located downtown but want to show support for our district, and so we have 18 of those currently. Here's our budget 2021. We've had to, um, go through that quite a bit this year, just with every, uh, thing going on, just trying to make sure that we're readjusting, um, which has been fun. Upcoming projects, so we do have, we came up with this design, uh, we will be, uh, approaching Public Works now that we've created it to see, um, and this is more to identify, I don't know if you've seen, like, when you go to other communities, it's a place to identify that, oh, this is Plumas Street, just another opportunity to drive people down there. Um, but this was a design the marketing team had came up with on the top, they were pretty excited about it, we were able to get the tower up there, um, the water tower up there. And so anyways, we've come up with it, now we're going to work with Public Works and see if, uh, what we can do and what the cost would be and to kind of figure out some plan for that for the downtown to, to get that up. Um, we do have a long-term goal of a P-Bid, which is a property-based business improvement district. And, um, we do have more property owners that are on our board, so I think that was one of the, I think it's been a long-term goal, when I did some research, I found it, uh, being talked about in 2010 as well. But that is a long-term goal, um, for us to do, um, it would make our DBA stronger. We have other DBAs in the community or, um, other DVAs that, um, or other cities like Pleasanton that has a P-Bid and they do, they're able to, um, be a lot more successful. I think they have 600 members. We also have talked about an arch through Plumas Street and Bridge Street, the marketing team has, and we worked, we were working with, uh, somebody local, uh, for design and unfortunately he got busy as an electrician company and so, um, kind of back to where we're at. We tried to do it with a school too, to see if it would be a cool senior project. Um, but we do know that there is one side of Plumas Street, um, which just faces the, well, next to bridge that, um, has some opportunity. When you pass it, you don't always know that's downtown. And that's another thing that we've heard, um, from many people that come down to downtown, is they don't know that it's there. Here's our holiday lights and I apologize for this, uh, we tried to get Jerry Gregg out last year, but by the time he got there, um, he, we'd already taken down the light, so this is the best we've got for that. Um, we had four businesses close, um, Chair Gallery, McNally's Appliance, Corner to Go, which Corner to Go now has another business going in there, and then we have the City But we have three that we added, so down one. And then, of course, we've had COVID-19 that's really impacted our downtown and we've, uh, lots of, uh, communication, we've been working with, uh, Sutter County to communicate a lot of that stuff, the city's been great working with us as well with those guidelines. We had a fan project with Sutter County we worked on where they, uh, Valley Truck and Tractor also gave us fans, uh, Sutter County gave us fans, and then we, uh, a recent thing that we did was, um, with Officer Kloski, we had a homeless, um, town hall meeting with our members, um, for them to discuss their concerns and, um, and to just get information from Officer Kloski, he's full of a lot of information, he's done a lot of great work this last year. And then we also just recently applied, um, for a, a grant through the DBA. So that was fun. Crystal did that through Sutter County. Any questions?
To the mayor. Sandy, I just want to make one comment. I get dressed up in costume every year.
That is true. That is, you are, you are loyal.
Thank you for everything you do for the DBA, Sandy. You're, you got too many jobs, you, there's not enough time in the day for you, and also you, Crystal. Thank you.
All right. Through the mayor, um, I guess my relationship with Plumas Street goes back to my time as a fire chief and, and understanding all the, the trials and tribulations and the business interruption that occurred way back when and, uh, the city's intent to be a partner with the Downtown Business Association. Uh, and, you know, it's exciting to see that even through COVID times, we're still trying to get this thing going and Crystal and Sandy, I know you guys are, are a big piece of that, you know, and, uh, I for one will always continue to put forth the fact that when the city, uh, decided that it wanted to revitalize downtown, they entered into a partnership with the business owners and the business operators on Plumas Street. And, uh, I think- owners and the business operators on Pluma Street. And I think we owe it to all of them to always be cognizant of supporting that effort, where it's financially feasible, and do what we can to keep our downtown vibrant. I was down there during the Halloween season, and it was awesome to see the vibe. And I hope we can continue that. I understand, you know, we may be sliding back a bit, or at least, don't kill me, Mr. Burns. It's not our choice. But hopefully, we can, again, continue to support the businesses down on Pluma Street, keep them open to the extent we can do that, and keep the DBA and keep Pluma Street going. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. Grace, you can help me.
I'm impressed with your presentation every year. And from last year, you've added so much more quality and content, that is really interesting to me. So the majority of your members are in retail than in that area. How many, do you know approximately how many, because there's a pie chart, so I wasn't...
I'd have to defer to Crystal, who is our coordinator that takes care of us and all these kind of things. But I would say, to be fair, we've got, if we've got members of 80, and I know there's like nine restaurants down there.
Twenty-eight, oh, that's really, that's really good. So then, how do you, how do you integrate, like, business owners who have English as a second language? Do you, are they part of the DBA, or how?
Yeah.
Yeah. The whole street is? Okay. And then the outside, like, we're part of it, too, but I'm just trying to get the whole picture. And these others are supporters of the DBA and get involved? Is that what that is?
Yes, we do have some that participate because they want to be a part, or their business can help with the DBA. And so, because they're not zoned, and zoned to be, they want to participate in whatever capacity that is. Sometimes they just, we have one that, we've got a couple that just love the energy down there.
Right.
So we're super blessed that they like the energy, and so they've become associated members. But there's kind of an eclectic mix of our associated members. Some have been just doing it for a long time, and it's the good thing to do. But we have a lot of others that do it because they want, there's a relationship there that they're trying to establish, a strong relationship with us.
Especially, you know, with restaurants and retail right now, it's really tough. I mean, with all of these requirements and customers, I hear from customers, you know, in a different perspective, that their expectation of places that they feel comfortable in going into, you know, to buy and use things. And they want to go local, but sometimes they don't always necessarily feel comfortable going in there because of their own perceptions of beliefs about COVID. And so, I think it's great that you're doing all this work and that you have 80. If somebody's interested, just send them to you, either of you, even if they're not in that district, to be part of. Because I get, you know, people call outside asking, and it sounds like a really great network of support as well, to help small business owners, right?
Yeah, they can be an associate.
Okay. Well, great work, ladies, and your whole team. Appreciate that so much.
All right. Thank you very much, Sandy. Two things, and I just forgot one of them.
Good. That's good. I almost out the door.
Yeah. The arch, great idea. I don't know if it's gonna be like Marysville, the entire intersection, or just like a gateway thing towards it.
Well, there's a lot, yeah, there's a lot of logistics.
Yeah, whatever, whatever the vision may or may not be, it's too early to decide right now, but great idea. Also, for whatever it's worth, fully support the continued conversation, hopefully some momentum behind the idea of getting some LED lighting down the street that we can tailor to different holidays or whatever. Great idea. We talked about it before. Just know we remain, or I remain, 100% behind that idea, so.
Thank you. And before I leave, just, I want to thank the council. You guys have really supported the DBA, especially this last year, and just even picking up phone calls when some of us have called, just to kind of walk us through some stuff. And we really do appreciate it. So thank you.
Thank you all very much. Crystal, you too. Thank you very, for everything.
Through the mayor. I think one thing the council needs to do, and the city needs to do, is we need to get that water tower either painted or lit up.
All right.
Be a big thing for the...
Oh, that's my PowerPoint.
That's your PowerPoint? Okay.
That's, that's, that would be very nice to have that happen as well. Okay. Any public comment on the item?
No comments online.
All right. So our action today would be A and B.
Through the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Move to adopt a resolution accepting and approving the 2020-2021 annual report of the DBA Improvement District, and also adopt a resolution of intention to levy and collect the 2021 annual assessment and set a public hearing for December 15th, 2020.
Second.
I think Manny beat ya. So we have a first and second to approve the staff's recommendation. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nothing unanimous. Thank you very much. Number 13, changing land use for a vacant parcel at 845 Louise Avenue. And it looks like we have a recusal.
Through the mayor.
Sir.
I must recuse myself. I have a family member that owns property nearby.
Very good. Thank you, sir. We'll come get you pretty soon.
Watch your cake, okay?
All right. So, good evening, councilmembers. So, we'll try to make this item quick. It's really, this is the second part of a two-part process to update the city's zoning ordinance to change the land use zoning for the subject area. The subject area was briefly discussed with the homeless issue. It's the vacant lot here to the northwest corner of Louise and Stafford Way. And so, so with that, we've, we've had a proposed development that's come through to convert this from a C3 commercial zoning that was originally the Calsscape, as previously discussed, to turn that into a residential, multi-unit, high-density residential zone that could, for the development of apartments. And so, as briefly stated, this project was before you. This is a two-part process. At the last meeting on November 3rd, city council approved a general plan amendment that changed the land use from commercial to residential, and then also approved the environmental document. And so with the rezone being a two-part process, it was introduced at the last meeting, and then with this meeting, it's for consideration to change that zoning to match the land use. And so, it's a vacant parcel, 0.83 acres in size. Here's the land use that was officially changed at the last meeting, where it went from the purple, commercial, to the orange, which is the medium-high density. It's compatible, it's found to be compatible with the area, with the existing residential to the east. With it, it's kind of that buffer between commercial and residential to have that high-density residential use. And this is what, the zoning change that tonight is what you're considering, is the change of from a C3 to an R3 zoning. Here's the proposed project that would, this is just draft, the, any project that would come forward would have to have full plans submitted, and then it would go through the building permit process and to review the site layout, and go through each department for review. And so, through the analysis, we found that the zoning, the project does not affect the implementation of the general plan with respect to surrounding properties. The proposed project is consistent with the purpose of the zoning ordinance to promote and protect the public health, safety, peace, comfort, convenience, and general welfare. And so with that, I recommend tonight that the council consider and then adopt an ordinance of the city council, the city of UBA City amending the zoning from the general commercial C3-X5C combining district, zone district, to the multiple-family residential R3 zone district for approximately 0.83 acres at 845 Louise Avenue, Sessor Parcel, 52141036, and waive the second reading. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any from up here. Any public comment, or any, you do? Go ahead, Tom.
So I'm concerned about if you rezone it. I don't know, you know, any clarification on the zoning, but I sure wouldn't like to see, like I see in my neighborhood right now, where we got a skyscraper being built at the corner of Gardner Highway and Percy. So I would be interested to know the height level. I mean, right now, we got a 45-foot tall building, and everything else around there is, you know, 20 feet high. So, that's what I'm concerned about, putting, you know, a high-rise in there.
So currently, how it's zoned right now in the commercial district, I believe we have a 52-foot limit in the zoning. And so the residential district, depending on if it's single-story or two-story, it has a maximum limit that's less than that. So if anything, this is bringing it down. But yes, you might see a three-story apartment, most likely a two-story apartment. It is typically based on cost of construction and how it pencils out.
Okay, thank you. Anything online, ma'am?
No online comments.
All right. All right. So we have action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I move that we adopt the ordinance of the city council of the city of UBA City, amending the zoning for the general commercial C-3-X5C combining district, zone district, to the multiple-family residential R3 zone district for approximately 0.83 acres, 845 Louis Avenue, Sessor Par, Sessor Parcel number 52141036, and waive the second reading.
Second.
All right. We have a first by Councilwoman Espendola, a second by Councilmember Shaw to approve staff's recommendation. All those in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed, unanimous. Thank you very much, Ben. Also, Ben, let me take another opportunity to thank you for your work with Citizen. You and I both received calls from regarding some marijuana issues. He sent me a text and thanked you and me both for the results. So thank you very much. I appreciate the follow-up. And we got Mr. Vice Mayor back. We'll move on to item number 14, the city council meeting calendar for 2021. Here she goes.
Good evening, mayor and city council. As you know, I'm Sierra Wakefield. I'm the new city clerk administrator for the city of UBA City. And tonight, I'm here to present the proposed 2021 city council meeting calendar. The proposed 2021 schedule is consistent with previous years, with regular city council meetings occurring on the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 6:00 PM, with special workshops being scheduled as needed. You may have seen this. This is kind of a visual representation of what the calendar will look like. Staff does have some recommended changes to the typical Tuesday schedule. We're recommending that January 5th meeting be canceled, only because this follows the city hall closure that's taking place December 28th through January 1st. And this is typically when staff would prepare their staff reports and the agenda for that meeting. In addition, we recommend that we cancel the meeting on August 3rd, which is our national night out. And often, councilmembers are out and about in the community on that evening. We also are recommending two special workshops, one on January 12th, to discuss the fiscal year 2021 expenditures and budget, and then also on May 25th, to discuss fiscal year 21-22 budget planning and projections. So with that, I'd like to recommend those changes, the cancellation of January 5th and August 3rd, and I'll take any questions.
I'm not seeing any, any public comment?
No public comment.
Grace, would you, are you, oh, never mind. You're hitting your laptop. I thought you were hitting your mic button. All right. All those in favor, or actually, I need a motion, sorry.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
I'll make the motion. Cancel, request staff's recommendation to cancel on the January 5th and August 3rd, 2021, regular council meetings, provide the special workshops to be scheduled as needed.
Second.
First and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And passes. And may I, Sierra or Judy, may please make a request to have the colored coded calendar, just shoot me an email with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Very nicely done. I love that.
Yeah, it helps.
Yeah, it helps.
Item number 15, water treatment plant membrane filter replacement. What we've all been waiting for.
Good evening. So you guys know I love water.
Oh, yeah.
So I'm so excited to be able to talk to you about a Public Works item. All right. So the item before you is the water treatment plant membrane filter replacement project. So here's a picture of the water treatment plant. And we have two different types of filtration systems. The media filtration system, which was installed with the original construction of the plant. And then in the early 2000s, we added in membrane filters, and we have set tanks for the membrane filters. So here are some pictures of the cells for the membrane filters. So the membrane filters themselves, you guys have seen them, consist of thousands of hollow fibers contained in cylinders called modules. So these are the modules right here. Suction pressure pulls raw water through the fiber walls, which collect turbidity and suspended solids. Clean water passes through the hollow core of the fibers. The water treatment plant has two cells consisting of 1,800 membrane filtration modules each, so 800 of these little modules. The membrane modules are reaching the end of their 10-year expected service life. The water treatment plant staff has spent 920 labor hours this year pinning modules that have deteriorated. And that is quite the process, because you're literally standing there, putting tiny, tiny little pins into holes in the top of the filters. And so this level of effort has becoming progressively more intensive over the last 12 months. And so, the city's modules are MemCor S10N membrane filtration modules manufactured exclusively by DuPont Water Solutions. There's a long history in how we got to the State Water Resource Control Board approving these modules for the city's permit in October 2019. The original modules that were installed had some issues in terms of the design and the particular water quality issues associated with the Feather River. And so we worked with the manufacturer over a series of years to develop a new module that had a, basically a thicker fiber, so it wasn't subject to as much deterioration as the previous model. But through that, we had to work through the State Water Resource Control Board to get those authorized and approved to be able to utilize for our system. So these filters are an integral repair part of the existing system, and there are no other suppliers for these integral repair parts. So we evaluated the condition of the remaining modules. There's approximately 270 modules in cell one that are still considered to be in good condition. We're proposing to relocate those to cell two, to buy a little bit of additional time in cell two, and just this year, replace the 800 modules in cell one. They are quite expensive. And so DuPont Water Solutions provided a quote of $686,158.50 for the 800 modules. Staff will actually install the modules. And so we're requesting, as part of your action tonight, to do a supplemental appropriation of unallocated water reserve funds to CIP account number 971227, to provide for the purchase of the modules. There's currently approximately $4.88 million of unallocated water reserves in the account. And with that, we're asking that you adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase from DuPont Water Solutions with the finding that it's in the best interest of the city, and adopt a Class 1 categorical exemption per SEQA, and then also authorize the supplemental appropriation and direct the finance director to make the budget transfer of $686,158.50. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I'll loan some mouthful. Holy moly. All right. Any questions? Nope. Online?
No comments online.
All right. Motion time.
Through the mayor, I would like to adopt, but before I motion that, I just want to say I've been there, working, not working, when they were doing the pinning, and what an interesting process. And the gentlemen that were working on there, they loved it. They absolutely loved their job. And so, it definitely need, we need those long pins to filter through the water, so we can have nice and safe, clean water in this community. So with that said, adopt, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the purchase of 800 membrane S10N membrane filtration modules and related. Can I just say A and B?
Yep.
Thank you so much.
All right. You have a second? I'll second it. All those in favor? All seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And thank you very much, Diana. And you're back again for number, number 16, Safe Routes to School.
Yes. So I used to have a previous director that I worked for that described public works as roads to commodes. And the situation, we're going from water to roads. So, um, next up is the Safe Routes to School Plan. And we're asking for adoption of the plan. So the city received a Caltrans Sustainable Communities Grant in the amount of $221,325 for the development of a Safe Routes to School Plan to specifically analyze the 15 schools in the Yuba City Unified School District. So in November 2018, council awarded a contract to Alta Planning and Design to develop the plan. Um, here's the list of schools that were included in the analysis. As you can see, um, there aren't any charter or private schools included in this list. And that was actually one of the things as part of the public workshop that we held in January that Councilman Shaw asked, well, where are the charter schools and the, um, the private schools? That's something that we will address through an amendment to the plan. Our intention was to do that earlier this year with COVID hitting. It prevents us from being able to do the necessary studies and outreach that we would need to do to include them. So the city staff worked with Alta and Alta Sub Consultant Walk Sacramento to conduct community outreach, document existing needs, and identify and recommend potential infrastructure improvements, routes to for walking and biking, and education programs for schools. And the Safe Routes to School program aims to meet core goals and remove barriers to safe walking and bicycling through the six E's. And those are engineering, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and equity. So the elements of the plan that are shown here on the screen take those six E's into consideration. Through the development of the plan, projects were analyzed based on safety, population served, equity, community support, and cost effectiveness to establish a list of the top 20 projects. The projects include striping, signage, sidewalks, pedestrian actuated flashing beacons, and refuge islands. And one thing that I want to note is if you look at the schools, you'll see that it's a lot of the older schools. So Gray Avenue, Park Avenue, April Lane, King Avenue. You do have a river valley, um, for both some upgraded bikeway and striping and signage. But you'll notice a lot of Park Avenue items on here, and then Lynn Crest. Going to the next, uh, the 11 through 20, again, you've got Lynn Crest, Gray Avenue, King Avenue, Park Avenue, Bridge Street, April Lane. So a lot of these, um, and you would expect that in the older part of towns in that they would need more upgrades related to striping, or there's areas where sidewalks are missing, or the ramps are outdated. And so, um, through this, this plan, we were able to identify those projects. So as part of the, the plan, um, it provides a recommended improvement map where they looked out a half a mile radius from the schools. And the reason I brought up Park Avenue Elementary School is because on this top 20 projects, you noticed a lot of the projects were associated with the school. And so the recommendations are to install pedestrian hybrid beacon at Clark and Morton, install pedestrian refuge island, also at Clark and Morton, install high-visibility crosswalks on all four legs at, um, Park and Morton, and then install curb extensions, ADA-compliant curb ramps, upgrade to high-visibility crosswalks, install double-yellow center line. There's a lot of issues with how parents are parking right here. Install sidewalks along Marsha, former county area that's annexed into the city, didn't have sidewalks. And then install advanced yield signs. And so there's a map for each one of the schools like this in the plan. In addition, there's a map for suggested routes that would, um, the schools can utilize to give to their parents to say, hey, if, you know, if you, uh, live in this area, this is the suggested route to bike or walk to the school. Bridge Street Elementary is very interesting because Bridge Street has such a large volume of traffic. And, um, patients and kids aren't, parents and kids aren't very patient. And so we have issues with people trying to cross Bridge Street. And we're really trying to encourage them to use signalized intersections to cross Bridge Street. So how will this plan be used? The city will be able to leverage the plan to apply for grants. We've already submitted, submitted two grant applications based on the recommendations from the plan. So one is a Fracmid Blue Sky Grant. And the Fracmid Grant Committee recently approved $45,000 to procure a rapid flashing beacon for the Clark-Morton intersection along with related striping improvements at Clark-Morton and Park-Clinton. The ADA ramps that were noted in the map will have to be funded through a different funding source. We've also submitted through Caltrans, the HSIP, which is Highway Safety Improvement Program. We submitted four different applications with, um, number one being improved signal hardware at 38, signalized intersections. So those are the signalized intersections at, at city intersections. And that would be to install new backplates, replace eight-inch bulbs with 12-inch bulbs, add replace LED internally illuminated street name signs, and install reflective tape. The second application was to install, upgrade signs with new fluorescent sheeting and roadway safety signing audit. The third application is crosswalk improvements at the 15, um, at 15 unsignalized intersections, which happened to correspond with a lot of the school locations. And then number four is to improve signal hardware at 17 State Highway Signalized Intersections. And so this, this plan is going to provide us a lot of resources because it checks a lot of boxes in terms of the studies, the community outreach, the coordination with parent groups, the teachers, the principals. And, uh, we're very excited to adopt this plan. Next steps, like I mentioned earlier, would be to conduct a similar analysis for private and charter schools within Yuba City and also coordinate with Yuba City Unified School District to implement the plan. As much as I talked about the physical improvements that are included in the plan, there's a lot related to programs that the school can, um, implement to provide education to their parents and the kids on the best routes to school, the best way, the best way to cross, those types of things to try to, um, maintain the safety of the kids. And with that, the recommendation is to adopt a resolution adopting the Safe Routes to School Plan.
Great program. Thank you very much. And I love the, the ability to leverage other stuff, too. It's really nice. Um, any public comment on the item? Yes, Tom, come on up. Anything on the computer waiting by chance, Sierra?
No comments online.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Tom.
So, um, that sounds great to me. I wanted to say, you know, I drive around quite a bit, like probably all of you guys do. And, um, I mean, the, sometimes, I, I try to do the speed limit, maybe a few miles over to keep people off my back. But, uh, I have been passed on the right, passed down the middle. And, you know, the, um, so it seems as time goes on, it's getting more and more reckless out there a little bit with, uh, with drivers. And, uh, many a time, I've been on my way to work and might see a, a young girl or a young boy and girl walking to school and have said to myself that, um, it's a beautiful thing to be able to have your kids walk to school unmolested, you know what I mean? And, uh, and not have to worry about them. So, uh, anything to improve that, I'm all for it, and I'm glad to see it. That's my comment.
I agree. Thank you very much. All right, so we have, uh, action item on the table here.
Comment for Diana first.
Yes, sir.
Hey Diana, was that the presentations we went to last year, like at Lynn Crest School and, uh?
It was early this year, believe it or not, yeah.
Is it early this year?
Yeah.
I thought it was late, like last year. Okay, I, that was a great presentation that they gave, and that was, and then this is what they came to.
Right.
Folks put all their suggestions in, and then this is what we're doing for them.
Right.
Thank you. And seeing that, uh?
Actually, hold off, please. Through the mayor. Uh, Ms. Langley, first of all, thank you for recognizing that night when I brought it up about the charter schools and the private schools because, in, in my opinion, as one of five, we didn't do justice to this whole thing because we've got so many kids that go to public, or excuse me, private and charter schools that need just as much safety as, as Yuba City Unified does. And I was in dismay that we didn't include them in the initial because they're part of our, our community. I agree with the priorities up there. I drive up Gray Avenue every day. You can't even hardly see the crosswalk at April Lane. It is, it is, it's bad. And, uh, so it has to be redone. But I'm curious about, and, and I realize COVID threw us for a loop. We weren't able to get the kids going to school to get the counts. But how will this priority list change as we go forward? Because I can think of, you've got Park Avenue, but to the west, you've got St. Isidore's. And to the, uh, east, you've got Yuba City Charter, and those are in the old section of town. And you've got the same issues with crosswalks and re-striping and everything else. So as they, uh, amend this down the line, will there be a different prioritization ranked upon the overall necessity, not holding up the current projects? And will we also be working with those schools? Because they don't report to Yuba City Unified to do outreach to their students and their parents in the future.
Yes, it'll be the same level of effort in terms of, um, because the scope of work would be the same as what we did for this. In terms of the priority, they'd still, those projects would be analyzed based upon the same criteria. So that was safety, population served, equity, community support, and cost effectiveness. So some of those projects might not rank as high just based upon the number that they serve. But it's our intent to try to, especially the, the easier projects in terms of striping or things that can be implemented pretty quickly, to try to address those quickly. It's the, the larger projects where you might have to go in and put sidewalks on an entire street. Those will be the ones that will be, uh, more delayed.
Okay, yeah, thank you. And you answered what I was after, is if we have a priority, say, in front of St. Isidore's, it's not just going to fall at the end of the list. It may fall to number five.
Right.
It's going to be ranked on the same criteria. And when we get the kids back in school, uh, will they, do they have any idea? I mean, I'm asking for you to tell us when everything is going to go back to normal, I realize. But is this something that once we kind of get children back to school and stuff, that they will do this amendment? And it takes a couple of months to do?
It takes longer than that. So this one took, um, a little bit over a year from the time that council awarded the contract to when we were, um, the plan was finalized. And so with, you're gonna have, um, since we're looking at charter and private, you're still gonna have quite a few schools to evaluate. You're still gonna be coordinating. It's not that you have necessarily a superintendent that you're going to. Either you're gonna be dealing with multiple principals, multiple parent groups. And so the level of effort and time would probably be very similar in terms of it would take, you know, up to a year to complete that amendment.
Okay, thank you. That was just my question.
Because then summer falls in there, too, and you've got to hit it, you know, during the prime time.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I guess he's deferring to me. Mr. Mayor, you got anything, or are you ready for a motion? Uh, through the mayor, I, uh, move to adopt a resolution adopting the Safe Routes to School Plan.
Second.
All right, first and second, all those in favor? Signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And unanimous, thank you very much. Do we have any future agenda items we would like to bring up? None at this time. We'll move on to reports and communications, beginning with Councilmember Cardoza.
All right. We've had an exciting two weeks. I'm gonna start off with meetings. I attended a Regional Housing Authority meeting, which we are bringing, uh, up here. We've got a project going, the Richland Village Apartment Project. It's gonna be another 176 units of affordable housing. So it's gonna be a great project that we're working on. We hope to get that, uh, uh, brought forward, uh, early spring. And then they'll be coming to council for the tax break, uh, once again, like we did last year for the one that's being built right now. But that's, uh, that's on the books for early spring of 20, 2021. Uh, I was part of the Feather River Air Quality Management Board Finance Committee for the Blue Sky Grant. So I was part of the team that helped get the money for the city for the crosswalk in that one area. Uh, attended Yuba City Unified School District Government Liaison Building, uh, meeting, excuse me. Uh, we discussed, uh, what's, what's happening and what's gonna be going on in the future for chamber events. We had an ambassador's meeting last night. It went from in-house to virtual. Uh, yesterday afternoon, they changed it to Zoom. Uh, we had a couple of ribbon cuttings. We had Esteban's Tacos and Burgers in Live Oak. Uh, they've expanded from out of the, uh, restaurant into their, uh, new location, doing great for the City of Live Oak, part of our chamber. Uh, also, um, for community and city events, uh, attended the senior, our senior center's senior health fair. We passed out gift, uh, gift bags, or not gift, but, uh, bags to over 125 seniors. Gave them little goodies, what they can deal with, and also gave them what's going on with our, uh, senior center, that we were, we were back open. This was a few weeks ago. We were back open and telling them the events and stuff that was going on. Uh, attended the DBA swearing-in of the new Board of Officers with Councilman Shaw and Mayor and Vice Mayor. And we saw the new mayor, uh, the new members and had a great time there. Um, the, uh, I attended Yuba Center Eats this last three days. I picked one day and didn't do all three. There was, uh, 24 restaurants in Yuba Center County that participated in it. Uh, it was a great turnout. I, uh, hit a couple on Saturday, and, uh, there was people from everywhere in the community that, that was a good turnout for the establishments. So that was a good time there. The, uh, Adventist Health and Urgent Care Clinic, uh, they were supposed to have ribbon cutting yesterday. And, uh, due to COVID, they had canceled it. And council, in the last four years of me being the ambassador representing the city, uh, we give them a, uh, cer-, a certificate of achievement, welcome them, new businesses in our community to help prosper and make our, uh, city great. So, uh, I, uh, met with Rick Rossin, the president of, uh, Adventist Health, and gave him the pla-, gave him the plaque, represented us and gave it to him. That way, uh, they're part of the team, and I wanted to make sure that that happened. And then, last but not least, uh, the museum is closed again, but our gift shop is open. We're open Monday through Friday, from 1:00 to 5:00, Saturdays from 12:00 to 4:00. And I guess that's gonna be my last events for, uh, community events for the city.
Indeed. Um, and thank you very much for that, Manny. I really appreciate that. You're always very, very active. You've got a long list all the time. Your dedication, enthusiasm, motivation for this city is without question. So thank you very much for that. We will see you, uh, uh, next Tuesday. And, uh, but thank you so much for everything you've done, and we'll continue to do, no doubt. Thank you so much. This is Espendosa, or excuse me, gosh, Espendola, sorry.
Sure, Mr. Holland.
Out myself immediately, so give me a break.
Oh, Harris, sorry, that's it. I forgot your last name for a minute, no. Oh, good kidding, what's that? Um, Manny, uh, Councilman Cardoza, I want to thank you so much for, um, all of the years of your service that you've done for our city. Um, there's no one, in my belief, that has a greater or bigger heart of the work that you've done. Um, and all of these events that you go to or that you show up, you're always there 100% truly for, um, the love of the city. And, um, I, I, I can never master that or be equal to you in that way. So I would love to just acknowledge your service and the work that you've done for the city. And plus, you also worked for the city many, many years. So you're retired from here. So your service is way more than I will ever be able to master or reach your level. Thank you so much. So last, uh, we had a, a meeting, um, a small meeting, and just to kind of have a discussion about emergency preparedness with Vice Mayor, um, Boom Garden, and, um, Police Chief, and Fire Chief, and myself. So we'll be reporting more of that in the future. The RWA meeting occurred, and, um, Ms. Langley already mentioned how much she loves water. Um, one of the things that, um, within that group is that the city, our city prefers to have water from Orville Dam area than from central California. And so we had that discussion. I did not attend this last meeting, but we've had this discussion within the realm of this group to help us, um, be prepared when there is potentially droughts or shortage of water, of water. Um, I also, as I mentioned earlier, I am requesting that a certificate really, you know, is put together for the homeless consortium and acknowledging the work through the homeless consortium and, and including our police department in part of that, um, recognition as well. And, um, a couple more things. Um, with the League, League of City, Cities, um, I'm reappointed into the Revenue and Taxation Committee for the Sacramento Valley Division, so I will be doing that again for another year. I was reappointed. Um, and lastly, I just want to say that- Um, and lastly, I just wanna say that, um, within, um, my family, as you all know, there's been, uh, COVID-19 has been a, a big issue in, in our family, and I just want our community that if, overall, my concern is about people's well-being in our community, and the health of well-being impacts our economy. And, um, I have this conversation daily with, um, community members who are consumers or people that are small business owners, and their concerns about, um, us defeating this virus and having some normalcy in our, in our lives is truly a big issue for our community, and I, I hope that we can, um, get this taken care of all together as one. And so, you know, I wear a mask, social distance, limit your social gatherings. I have bubbles where people I group with and some, um, you know, we make, we make, um, adjustments. And, you know, I, I get the flu shot. I didn't get the flu shot for many years, and, and they're saying, you know, it's a good thing to get the flu shot. Will I get the new vaccine? Um, I'm gonna wait for a little bit, see how that looks, but I'll probably end up getting the, the vaccine for COVID-19. Um, I, I just, one thing that someone sent me was that, um, I, I'm hoping that, that, that this issue doesn't cause for someone to go to a person's funeral and end up in a, in a really bad situation like our family. And within that also, healthcare providers, I work with them closely, they are tired. They are mentally exhausted, not Dr. Lou, just her and the team around that. Healthcare providers, I talk to pharmacists, to doctors, to nurses. Local healthcare providers are exhausted, and they're needing us to help them with defeating And my transition to this is horrible, but I'm gonna do it. Um, we do have some vacancies in our commissions. If you're interested, um, we have the Economic Development Commission. Sierra did these wonderful applications. We have Parks and Rec Commissions, and we have the Planning Commission. And with all that, I also want to wish our Vice Mayor a happy birthday, and I'm gonna not share his cake, but thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first of all, Councilwoman Cardoza, um, your license plate says, well, oh, well, heart of, heart of Yuba City. Uh, I've said it before, I think you're probably one of the greatest ambassadors that we've had with our city. You, you represent us, uh, well with the heart of the city out there, so thank you for what you've done. Um, I, uh, was looking forward to spending a few more years with you up here, but, uh, I know you're gonna be around in the community, and this isn't goodbye, we've still got a couple more weeks, so, uh, continue on, my friend, and continue doing good for the city. And I wish you the best in everything, so. Following up on other comments, uh, I'll just say it as it is, I think everybody's tired, you know? Whether you're in healthcare, whether you're a business owner, um, we've said it before, we'll all get through this together, use common sense, uh, no reason to belay lingering what we already all know and we're all feeling, but, uh, everybody is tired. With that, uh, the last couple of weeks been extremely busy, uh, a lot of ad hoc committee works, Mr. Mayor, with the Vice Mayor and myself. I will just leave it, uh, with the Bogstewart Master Plan Tax Sharing Agreement. We'll just leave that one right where it's at for right now. I'm not overly energetic, uh, about it. Um, and, but I'm really hoping that, uh, we can get it across that finish line, but I'm disappointed in some of the things that I've, you know, that's happened in the last few weeks, and I will just leave it at that. But I'm really hopeful that we can finally get it there. The other has been the ad hoc committee for the, uh, city manager recruitment. That is moving forward, uh, on schedule, on track. Uh, we had a very robust applicant pool, and the Vice Mayor and myself has been very diligently working with our recruitment firm and, um, very optimistic that in the future, we will have the right fit for our city. Um, and, um, and, uh, we will continue to move forward. But saying that, I definitely want to say that we have been at no lax for a city manager. Ms. Langley, thank you. You fill the interim position like no other. You go beyond and above the call of duty. You did it once before, you did it a second time, and, um, I just, the public needs to know that, straight up. You, you're rock solid, and, um, I really thank you for everything that you've done. So, uh, with that, uh, I'll keep it brief, and, uh, we'll report out in a few more weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Cardoza and I go way back, spending, um, many, many, uh, many evenings, sometimes in the middle of the night, taking care of people, and it's been a, a true pleasure. And, and, you know, your, your help when I came on the city council and, and guidance and, uh, support, um, are, were very much appreciated. There'll be more to say, uh, in a couple of weeks, but, um, you know, there, it's been said here, I don't think anybody loves Yuba City more than Manny Cardoza, and, uh, impressed, always. Um, a lot of meetings over the last couple of weeks, um, weekly meetings with Dr. Lou, um, on the phone, listening to, you know, the COVID ebbs and flows, and, uh, interesting that, um, you know, they, they sort of predicted that we would see a surge, and we're seeing it. Um, you know, there's all kinds of opinions about what that is, but the bottom line is this, this COVID is real, and it is, uh, to Councilwoman Espandola's comments, you know, we need to take reasonable precautions. We can all have different opinions about businesses being open and closed, et cetera, and it's not my point here today to, to debate that, but I think we all should be responsible for, for our own personal health, and if you feel like you need to, to wear a mask, by all means, wear it. If you feel like you need to wash your hands, by all means, do that. That's what we do to stay away from any, but, any disease. So, uh, enough said about that for now. I sat on the countywide oversight committee, which is a committee that's, uh, tasked with, um, managing, uh, the, I guess it would, the best way to put it is managing the aftermath of the redevelopment agencies. Um, and, yeah, at this last meeting, uh, the city was requested to, and rightfully so, justify its expenses, its requested expenses, and I know that Spencer Morrison will be taking care of that. But, uh, annually, we make a request to cover, uh, costs associated with managing the properties, disposing of the properties, et cetera. So for the council, anyway, that's, that's a task that's in front of us. Sat on LAFCO, want to thank Mr. Moody for, uh, his efforts on the municipal services review and the sphere of influence, um, both of those. This is for the Bogstewart Master Plan area, both of those. These, these are a lot more successful than our master tax exchange agreement, but we do have a municipal service review that was approved, presented and approved, and a sphere of influence. So the city's sphere of influence has been increased, and it does set the stage for the potential annexation of areas, uh, south of Yuba City, should those property owners desire to do so, but it is contingent upon a, a tax exchange agreement. So, um, we're continuing to, to fight that paddle. On the subject of the master tax exchange agreement, a couple, uh, couple last-minute movements of the goalposts, in my opinion. Um, are they, is the project dead in the water? No, not at all, but, uh, we'll have to sort through that. Um, they were, um, they, they came as a little bit of a surprise, uh, to us, but again, we have good partnerships with the county, and, and I'm, I'm confident that we can work through those. The DBA swearing in process, uh, down at, um, Sopatai, a lot of excitement in the, in the Plymouth Street area, and, you know, I, I hope like heck that we can continue, continue to keep that area moving forward. City manager process, as Councilman Shaw mentioned, um, this, this is a extremely important process for the city. Um, we are getting great guidance from our colleagues, uh, Councilman Cardoza, Councilwoman Espandola, I got that right, um, and, and the mayor in regards to, you know, the type of, you know, person that we want to bring onboard here, uh, to lead our city. Uh, we do continue to anticipate that person being onboard sometime during January of 2021, uh, if things continue to progress. Um, with that being said, um, that concludes my comments, and I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. I'll be brief, or, the way repeating, things have been said. You know, one of my, one of my biggest responsibilities, I think, outside of this room, um, is my role on our board of directors down in SECOG, and it's been quite busy. We do have a, haven't had a recent meeting of the board, that is, coming up on Thursday. However, I do belong to two subcommittees, a transportation subcommittee. We talked about a lot of things, and the, the main thing that we, came up was the, the regional trail network that we're working on, Sacramento and all the communities affected by SECOG, they want to have an, an integrated network of trails, providing mostly, you know, not just, um, recreation and, and fitness, but transportation for folks to get to and from, and kind of reduce, uh, greenhouse gas emissions and put, get people out of their cars. So, uh, we have a project here, we've been for feasibility study here at our trail, um, which is, uh, right now, it's empty land, the, uh, Union Pacific Railroad property. However, we are looking forward to that, that, uh, that came up. Also, Sububuca canceled, Gilcizer was canceled. I also belong to, um, as a part of SECOG, another subcommittee, Race Equity and Inclusion Subcommittee, to where those, uh, SECOG, we're trying to examine our policies, our procedures, all the way down to, uh, HR issues, to see if there's ways that we may be unintentionally, um, being unfair, un, un, inequitable in our policies and the way we make decisions. And so we, they did hire a consultant, the consultant gave us a 29-page report that included not only some statements and opinions, but from board members in the public, but, um, some, uh, options moving forward to make us better. And so we are going to take those, some of those, and, um, come up to the full board at an upcoming meeting, probably in, uh, December. An opportunity to, to attend the government liaison meeting with Yuba City Unified School District, and Diana, of course, was, uh, present as well. She had an opportunity to tout the, uh, Safe Routes to School projects that we're going through, that was, of course, and the school district, of course, very appreciative of that. Um, I was honored to be, to have been asked to do a, uh, speech, um, for KUBA, the annual event that KUBA does for the hometown hero. This, of course, this year was a virtual awards ceremony, so after about take number 75 in my backyard, I got to put together 90 seconds of a greeting, um, celebrating so many community heroes. I, and then there's, the list is really long and distinguished, so I don't want to try to run off the top of my head, because I'm gonna forget somebody, and, uh, accidentally. I also spoke at Yuba City Rotary Luncheon, uh, basically kind of a miniature state-of-the-city address for them. They had some, uh, very good questions, a really group, a good group of people. Um, want to thank the ad hoc committee, um, primarily the, you know, these two gentlemen here are working on some very, uh, important, uh, projects right now, not that what we all do isn't, but I tell you, this is, this is stuff that's gonna have a lasting effect, and I appreciate the work you're doing on the front end before it comes, things come to the full council. Uh, let's see, um, did all that. Manny, I know, I know we've already touched on it a little bit, but, you know, next, here in a couple of weeks, it's gonna be, uh, bigger room, maybe, uh, off-site, uh, so here, you know, for what it's worth, in the, in the comfort and familiarity of our family room, uh, from me to you, uh, thank you so much. Um, not only as, uh, your mayor, fellow council member, but a resident of Yuba City. Uh, it's already been said, and I couldn't agree more, that, uh, you do a hell of a job out there, you're the best, uh, representative and face and ambassador and mascot we could ever have. So, so, thank you very much. And I, and I, and I know you, uh, like Dave said, you're not gonna disappear, you know, but, uh, you and Kathy are, are a fixture around town, and, um, thank you so much for everything, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks. Um, tonight, I want to close in memory of Sardarni Gorbashkar Dibbal, and please forgive me if I mispronounced, but, um, she recently passed away. Um, I do not, I know she was up there in years, but she was the mother of, uh, former Mayor Preet Dibbal. Um, Ms. Dibbal passed away, and I know that she's been here several times in our council chambers, attended meetings in support of us and in support of Preet, and I, no doubt how much she was loved and admired by her family, and, uh, may she rest in peace. Thank you all very much, and we'll see you in a couple of weeks.